Madam President, we do have a quorum.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I've been informed by our clerk that a quorum is present, and we will begin with our invocation. Counselor Edwards will come up to introduce our clergy. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Father Paolo was born in Tristi, Italy, and became a priest in 2002. His priestess has taken him all over the world, including Taipei, Taiwan, for 10 years where he taught Italian at a local university. In 2012, he was assigned to the mission of the fraternity of St. Charles in Boston and taught math at Crystal Ray High School in Dorchester for 18 months. After serving under the leadership of Cardinal O'Malley, both in Medford and Beverly for many years, he was appointed chaplain at the Shrine of Our Lady of Good Voyage in the Seaport, and recently was administered to Administrator of Sacred Heart Parish in East Boston, where I go to church. So, in short, he is my priest, and I'm very happy to have him here and to serve our wonderful community of East Boston. So, without further ado, Father Paolo.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Thank you, Madam President, all Counselors, for having me with you today. In his last sermon, that letter became a model for Christian charity, John Winthrop addresses fellow settlers before we reach New England with these words: "We must delight in each other, make others' conditions our own, rejoice together, mourn together, labor and suffer together, always having before our eyes our commissioning community in the work as members of the same body, so shall we keep the unity of the spirit in the bond of peace. All of you have earned your right to be here today by winning the trust of the people of Boston. But along with that honor comes the duty to serve the people of our city, to labor and suffer together," as John Winthrop reminds us, "holding always the good of our community as a primary goal in all your decisions. So let us set our hearts for just a moment of prayer, asking God to guide and bless you. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of the women and men elected to serve on our city council. We thank them for their work, their faithfulness, to their commitment, and the sacrifices that they and their families make in seeking to build a city of justice and compassion. We pray for them and all of us, citizens of Boston. Help us, oh Lord, to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill to the poor, the marginalized, the most vulnerable, in those most in need of justice and compassion. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. May our city counselor be guided by your wisdom as we tackle the complex challenges of governance in these difficult times. And finally, Father, we knew them with strength from your presence and the joy of helping to build the community worthy of a human person. We ask as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen."
Thank you so much, Father Paolo. I know you're pressed for time, but hopefully you'll have time to join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you so much, Father. I know you're pressed for time, but we will now move on with the rest of our meeting after we've had that wonderful inspirational message. I don't think we've been enjoined yet by Counselor Baker, but he will join us late, so we will continue to move on. And that will be with the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Sorry about that. The approval of the minutes. And seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Sorry, I'm mute. Yeah.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, the minutes have been approved unanimously.
Thank you so much. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. I believe we are being joined right now by Counselor Baker. Counsel Baker? Yes. Is he with us? Counsel Baker, are you with us? Yes, he is. Madam Clerk, could you please amend the attendance report to include Counselor Baker?
And does he want to sign on to the passage of the minutes, Madam President?
Counsel Baker, we just voted to approve the minutes. Would you like to cast a yes vote to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes. And sorry for my tardiness.
Counsel Baker. Thank you.
Glad that you could join us. We will now move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1051?
Docket 1051, Message and Order Approving Homeworld Petition to the General Court, entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding Hiring Preference for Boston Resident Graduates for the Boston Police Department."
Thank you. Docket 1051 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. We'll now move on to reports of public officers and others. Could you read dockets 1052 and 1053 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1052, Notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Gregory Rooney as the Commissioner of the Boston Transportation Department, effective October 12, 2020. And docket number 1053, Notices received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Andira Alvarez as Commissioner of Property Management, effective October 12, 2020.
Thank you so much. Dockets 1052 and 1053 will be placed on file. We will now move on to reports of committees, starting with docket 0226.
Thank you. Docket 0226, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on January 29, 2020. Docket number 0226, ordinance to provide for the safe disposal of sharps through the establishment of a product stewardship program. To Mr. Report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards, who is Chair of the Committee of Government Operations. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Docket 0266 was sponsored by Counselor Asabi George, and the committee held a working session on October 5, 2020. This would establish a product stewardship program for the safe collection and disposal of sharps. The manufacturers of the sharps would be required to work with retailers that sell sharps for personal use, take back the sharps at the end of life with no additional cost to the consumer. The proposal will provide consumers with more convenient options to return sharps and will ensure the safe and environmentally sound disposal of those personal sharps. The proposal sets forth requirements that product stewardship plans must adhere to. The city's Inspection Service Department will have jurisdiction over the provisions of the proposal. At the working session, we heard comments from Chris English, Chief of Staff at ISD, PJ McCann, Legal Counsel for the Boston Public Health Commission, Jed Tracy, Director of Recovery Services, Leon Bethune, Director of Environmental Health Division for Boston Public Health. The committee discussed the city's current efforts regarding sharps disposal, including adding staff and additional kiosks. The committee discussed community outreach and public feedback, and emphasized the importance that the public have additional options for safe, secure disposal. The committee discussed and supported that the collection sites be accessible and pharmacies must pay a roll. The committee also discussed the city should educate residents about the proper disposal of sharps. Based on the information received at the working session, docket 0266 was amended as follows. We changed the title of the ordinance to an ordinance to provide for the safe disposal of sharps. The second whereas clause is amended after the word needles and adds the following phrase: "both for medical treatments and/or illegal drug use." The fourth whereas clause was amended with an immaterial change that basically removes the word "and" after the word "safety." It's further amended by eliminating all references to the establishment of a product steward program and replaces with "safe sharps disposal program for pharmacies." Section 12-16 will be referred to as the Safe Sharps Disposal Program. Changes to the Purpose Clause in 12-16.1 eliminate the creation of the Product Stewardship Program and eliminate the language that refer to the responsibility for the collection and disposal of sharps on the manufacturers. Language is added, however, that would require retailers to take back sharps. Further amended in 12-16.1 provides that the purpose of the ordinance to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public and the environment by providing for the safe and orderly collection of disposal sharps by requiring retailers to take back the sharps at the end of life at no additional cost to the consumer. The original intent of the Purpose Clause, to provide consumers with more convenient ways to return the safe and environmentally sound disposable. In 12-16.2, the definitions, the terms manufacturer, manufacturer, and personal use sharps, plan, and product stewardship plan are removed. The term "commission" is added to refer to the Boston Public Health Commission. The term "individual use" is added, and the definition of the term "sharps" is amended to add the following words after the word "animals" and have been used to penetrate the skin for the delivery of drugs to humans or animals that have been used or are not in the original intact and sealed packaging, and that result in from personal use or from use on pets. The additional language clarifies that the ordinance applies to sharps after their use. The definition of the term "pharmacy" is amended by removing the phrase "licensed by Massachusetts Board of Registration and Pharmacy" and the first sentence, and is amended in the last sentence by striking out the word "to" and placing it with word "for." The amended definition of the term pharmacy is now, "A pharmacy means a facility under the direction of supervision of a registered pharmacist, which is authorized to dispense controlled substances. The term pharmacy shall not include institutional pharmacies or pharmacy departments or independent community pharmacies with fewer than four retail locations within the city of Boston." The definition essentially is amended to get to the biggest players in the room. 12-16.3, the mandatory participation in sharp stewardship plan has been deleted and replaced with an amended Safe Sharps Disposal Program. 12-16.3 subsection A, the following sentence is added: "For each pharmacy location fully enclosed in another retail entity, the kiosk may be substituted for a mail-back program at no cost to the consumer or other alternative collection system at that location." 12-16.3 subsection B is further amended with the clause "with locations within another establishment." 12-16.3 is also amended for another clause: "To alternative proposal must yield a number of collection kiosks equal to the number of retail pharmacies the proposing chain or chains have located within the city of Boston that are not located within another retail entity." 12-16.4, Product Stewardship Plan requirements are, in the originally filed docket, is eliminated. 12-16.4, Container and Signage Requirements, as amended, provides for the signage requirements and eliminates reference to stewardship plans. 12, there are further amendments regarding the implementation and enforcement. Enforcement section is amended by adding a new first sentence with a language making the provisions of the ordinance effective a year after its adoption. The first full paragraph in the initially filed docket is stricken in its entirety. The second sentence adds the following clause after the words provisions of 12-16. A severability clause is added to assure that if any part of this proposed ordinance is deemed illegal or unconstitutional, that the rest of it shall survive. The docket in its amended draft ensures that the disposal is safe and accessible through the establishment of the Safe Sharps Disposal Program for pharmacies with oversight and approval of the collection of the sites by ISD and BPHC. The amended draft will ensure the security of collection sites and allows for flexibility and options for pharmacies. The amended draft also requires public outreach and education program so that the residents are aware of their options for safe disposal programs. By the chair, as the Chair of the Committee on Government Ops, to which the following is referred, I submit this report recommending that the docket, as amended, ought to pass.
Thank you so much for that thorough report. I would love to give the sponsor an opportunity to weigh in. Counselor Asabi George, would you like to say some words?
Yes, please. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you to Counselor Edwards for shepherding us through this process. And as you know, this has been a big part of my work over the last four years, and I'm excited today to present the final ordinance for the safe disposal of sharps. First, I'd like to thank my current staff, Jessica, Malika, Rachel, Karen, Ava, and Jack as well, and our former staff, particularly Alana, Olson, and Nadine Jean, who worked on this ordinance in its infancy. Over the years, we've learned so much about the prevalent use of sharps, including for IVF treatments, diabetes, and many kinds of therapeutic drug use. For too long, the city has shouldered the burden of unsafe sharps disposal as our residents have had no other option. We have found used and improperly discarded sharps on our playgrounds, in our waterways, and in our municipal waste. Garbage collectors have been pricked, children have been pricked. We have set up a specific 3-1-1 protocol so neighbors can report sharps on our sidewalks. Since January of this year, there have been over 12,000 requests for needle pickups through 3-1-1. Even with these efforts, the growing volume of used sharps continue to exceed the capacity of collection services. Last year, the city reported collecting upwards of 700,000 needles, and we know that that number is an underestimate at the best of the volume of used sharps in our city. We are at a point where the city of Boston is training little league coaches, janitors, and schoolteachers on safe needle disposal instead of focusing on education. They are taking turns walking through schoolyards, scanning for sharps, and cleaning out their own safe disposal kiosks weekly. And still, kids in our community have been stabbed by these sharps in their school playgrounds. As you know, this ordinance will create over 100 new sites for safe needle disposal. Not only will this be free of charge to our residents, but it will ensure that we are actively decentralizing some services. Through this ordinance, we will also hold pharmaceutical manufacturers responsible for their role in the growth of Sharps litter and the opioid epidemic. We finally will be removing the financial burden of needle disposal off the shoulders of our residents. Within the next year, I am so pleased that through this ordinance, our large pharmaceutical companies will be mandated to provide safe disposal mechanisms throughout our city in places where residents already go to receive their vital medicine. This ordinance will not end the opioid epidemic, but it will be a critical step to providing a safe way to dispose of sharps free of stigma and free of cost to our residents. I look forward to working with our pharmacies to improve upon the ordinance in the future and as we put it into place. Thank you all, colleagues, for your comments over the years and in our most recent working session. Thanks to the Boston Public Health Commission and ISD for their careful guidance in shaping the language of this ordinance. I'm looking forward to passage today and to seeing the incredible impact this will have for all of our residents in our city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Asabi George. Thank you for your leadership on this issue. Thank you, Chair Edwards, for that thorough report. Counselor Edwards seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0226 in a new draft. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0226, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Enthusiastically, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0226 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0226 has been passed in a new draft. We'll move on to docket 1032. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Docket 1032, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on October 7, 2020. Docket number 1032, An Ordinance Concerning Housing Stability Requiring Notice to Tenants and Farmer Homeowners of Rights and Resources. The Mr. Report recommending the order ought to pass in an amended draft.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards, who is Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. As I committed to my colleagues, we would have something for your consideration on October 21, which is today. As you know, the mayor introduced the Housing Notification Act on October 7. I committed to having a full conversation. We did have that conversation on October 14, at which point we discussed many different changes and suggestions for the mayor's office. Through back and forth, literally up until this morning, we have, I believe, come up with a comprehensive, balanced way to make sure that we are meeting the moment, which is an eviction moratorium ending on Monday, and also informing tenants of their rights, and also making sure that the resources that the city has provided already are truly accessible to everyone, and making sure that when we do collect the fines and when we do get that information, excuse me, the fines and there are violations, that some of that money could be set aside for rent relief. But I am moving right now, and I believe the amendments will be provided to all of my colleagues to reflect that conversation and the fact that I've listened to the administration's concerns, and you should receive those. So I move to formally amend the docket 1032. We can discuss those amendments, Madam President, and if they are accepted, I will then subsequently move that the amended version, as you had already stated, be adopted by this body.
There's a motion on the floor, so we'll need a second for that.
Second.
We have a second. So there is the email. As Counselor Edwards mentioned, there is an email going out so that everyone has the language. Want to give people a moment to pull up the language?
Madam Chair, through you to the Chair of Government Ops. When were these amendments made?
We were, I received the two suggested amendments from the mayor's office this morning. And I proposed the language to some of the already implemented amendments to soften the language, as I can explain, literally up until this morning.
Is there other discussion on the amendments? I see, Counselor Braden, did you, show of blue hands if you have comments or questions, please.
And I'm happy to summarize them, Madam President. I just wanted to make sure everyone had the document.
Right. Why don't you give us your summary, and then if people have discussion? Because we're going to vote on the amendments with a roll call vote, and then we're going to vote on the amended report, just so that everyone understands process here. All right. Why don't you talk us through, Counsel Edwards?
Thank you very much. The amendments to this Housing Notification Act, as people will recall, the act itself is really just getting information in the hands of tenants with a notice of quit and collecting that information at the Office of Housing Stability. The original act had proposed that ISD would be enforcing this, which was, I thought, a very intelligent and very good move, and that there would be a fine per day. The First Amendment defines what that fine would be, which is the maximum that the city could charge, which is $300 per day. And that is proposed by the mayor's office to make sure that it's very clear what the fine will be, how it's consistent, and how that it is part of our green ticket law. That's the First Amendment.
Can I ask a question on that? Sorry.
No problem.
Can I ask a question on that? So the landlord would be fined 300 a day if they didn't provide the information to the tenant that's being evicted? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
If I may, Madam President?
Please continue. Yes.
Yes, they would, but it would start upon the tenant filing a complaint. Okay, so the other amendment suggested by me, and I believe supported by the counselor, or excuse me, supported by the mayor's office, is a "may" clause, so that the money that is collected may go to rent relief. While the administration does not like to call dibs on funding, so we couldn't direct the fines to go to rent relief. We wanted to give the flexibility at the origination of the ordinance to allow for money to go essentially to rent relief. It cannot go to the tenants themselves, but it could hopefully go to a program or something that the city sets up. And then the final amendment is amending language I had proposed. I'd wanted to have the city and the Board of Health declare an emergency declaration, similar to Somerville, similar to Cambridge, similar to the CDCs. It basically said evicting someone or removing them physically from their dwelling unit in the middle of a pandemic is a health issue and a health risk. The language, after back and forth with the administration and looking at regulations, has been softened to essentially require the city of Boston to petition the Board of Health to come up with regulations to prevent or discourage eviction actions during a pandemic and other such actions that would incur or exacerbate a public health risk. So essentially, it's not demanding of the mayor specifically or of the Board of Health. It is really just telling the city of Boston, which is within our jurisdiction, to go to the Board of Health and petition for regulation, of which the Board of Health would have the independence to deny or not do, but it really is just pushing the city to do something in 10 days.
Yep. Show of blue hands for other questions. Counselor Baker, did you have another question?
Yes, just, so it says that the money may go into rent relief, but it will be going to general fund unless it gets directed there? It will go into general fund?
Yes, like all other city fines normally go into general fund. We just noted that, you know, the tenant, who is the one who's injured, actually gets none of this. And so while we couldn't do a direct to the tenant, we thought at least give them, have the option for one day, the allocation to rent relief.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions, discussion? And Counselor Edwards, just to clarify, there are three changes but one amendment, because you've mentioned the First Amendment, Second Amendment, Third Amendment. It's one amendment, three changes, yes?
Yes. It's one amendment.
No worries. I just want to make sure we're voting on one amendment, or if there's three. So if there's no other discussion, we're going to have a roll call vote on the amendment as presented by Counselor Edwards. Seeing and hearing no more discussion, I'm going to ask our clerk to call the roll. Madam Clerk? This is to vote on the amendment as presented by Counselor Edwards. We're going to vote on the full docket after we do the amendment, just to be clear to folks, okay? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 1032, an amendment currently on the floor. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, the amendment on docket number 1032 has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. The amendment has passed unanimously, as you've heard. Thank you so much. The amendment has passed unanimously. As you've heard, now we're going to move on to the actual docket. So Counselor Edwards seeks passage of docket 1032 as further amended. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Counselor, docket 1032, final docket. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, the amended docket number 1032 has passed with a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much, docket 1032. As further amendment has been passed, we will now move on to matters recently heard for possible action, beginning with docket 0888.
Thank you. Docket 0888, order for hearing concerning residents and neighborhoods in Boston most affected by student debt post pandemic.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia, who is Chair of the Committee on Small Business Workforce Development. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Just want to say congratulations to Counselor Edwards and Asabi George. Good job, y'all. Okay, so moving on to my matter here. So thank you, Madam President. Last night, the Committee on Small Business, oh, no, the other night, a few nights ago, I can't keep up with these days anymore. The Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development held a hearing discussing residents and neighborhoods in Boston most impacted by student debt and beyond the pandemic. We are, we were joined by Counselor Janey, who is the co-sponsor of this docket. In addition to Counselors Flynn, Arroyo, Campbell, and Bach. Counselor Asabi George was not able to make it, but did send a letter in her absence. One of our panel, on our panel, we had Commissioner Carlos Santiago of the Massachusetts Department of Higher Education, Marcelo Suarez Arcasio, Chancellor of the UMass Boston, Dr. Valerie Robinson, President of the Roxbury Community College, Claudio Martinez, Executive Director of Zero Debt Massachusetts, Kate Welbeck of the Student Borrower Protection Center, and Vanessa Snow, a student borrower and a community organizer with SEIU 509. We learned a lot from this hearing. Chancellor Suaro, Suarez Arcasio contributed an excellent framework for this conversation. We are dealing with two different pandemics right now. There is COVID-19 pandemic, but there's also a pandemic of racial inequality, and student debt is a great example of that inequality. Commissioner Santiago provided some statewide context, noting that Massachusetts is in the bottom third of states that offer support for students with, with debt. Dr. Valerie Robinson made some excellent points around who is being impacted by taking on, by taking out student loans, pointing out that a lot of students at RCC are 30 years old or older. Claudio Martinez, who has been instrumental in getting this hearing scheduled, advocated that the city issue a student debt report similar to what has been done in San Francisco. Kate Welbeck offered a more detailed explanation around the debt report that was issued in San Francisco and how it has been used. Finally, Vanessa offered a personal view as someone who has, who was the first in her family to go to college, and what it's like to live with thousands of dollars of debt. I also just want to give a shout out to the amazing members of the public who took time out of their business, evening to provide public testimony. One person in particular, Jerome, mentioned that due to a misunderstanding in his salary made payments, his credit score dropped by 150 points. Imagine that. This is what, this is what's at stake when student debt goes unaddressed. There is so much work to do on this issue, and because of that, I suggest that we keep this docket in committee. Thank you so much, Madam President. And I turn the floor back to you if you want to say any words.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go through colleagues first. Counselor Edwards, I see you would like to chime in. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I wanted to thank the sponsors for their leadership in this matter. This conversation is very timely. I asked, just, and I apologize, I could not make that hearing, but one thing I would love to bring up in the next conversation that we will certainly have about this, is what we discovered during our divestment hearings, specifically about where the city of Boston invests its money in retirement funds. While we were focused on prison labor and environmental justice, what we found out was there a huge amount of our retirement savings are invested in student loan debt and student loan carriers. And so I wanted that to be part of our future conversations, is how we're investing our retirements and making sure we get a return on our investment on payments I'm still making. So apparently, I'm paying into my retirement in two different ways, but I just want to remind people that we did discover that the amount of student loans and debt that the city of Boston is invested in, in maintaining and keeping. So thank you very much, Madam President, for your indulgent, and thank you, Counselor Mejia, for your report.
Thank you so much. And all that I'll say as a sponsor of this docket is that it was a very important conversation. I want to thank Counselor Mejia for her partnership and her leadership in this space and chairing that hearing. We do need to continue the conversation to Counselor Edwards's point, and so docket 0888 will remain in the committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. And we'll now move on to docket 0945. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0945, ordinance amending Chapter 12-9 of the City-Boston Code, ordinance regarding human rights.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This matter was referred to the Committee on Government Ops on August 19, 2020. The lead sponsors are, are Counselor Andrea Campbell and Counselor, Counsel President Kim Janey. The proposal amends the Chapter 12-9 by adding a new section that would prohibit covered employers from discriminating against employees or applicants based on their credit history and information. The hearing was, I think, one of the best hearings we had, specifically getting to the nuts and bolts, and really all agreeing that a person's credit history doesn't define who they are, their character, or their ability to do the job. Part of, we are, we were joined by, excuse me, Vivian Leonard, Director of Human Resources for the City of Boston, Avandra Covallio, Executive Director of the Boston Human Rights Commission, and Lynn Sanders, Deputy Director of the Mayor's Office of Workforce Development, as well as Nadine Cohen from Greater Boston Legal Services. At the end of the hearing, we discussed having a working session to make sure that we addressed the following matters, which is, can this in any way, shape, or form extend to housing to prevent your credit score being used against you in housing? The, per Counselor Bach's suggestion, specifically if the city is already leading on not using credit as an employment barrier, then that they should do so with the IDP policy, which apparently we do check people's credit if they're going to get an affordable unit. We also wanted to invite employers to the working session to hear their side, if they are in opposition, and what concerns they have about the language. There is an exception, I will note, in the actual proposed ordinance to exempt any employer from this if they, if they demonstrate that the credit history is a bona fide qualification of the job. That could include, I'm sure, some banks and some financial institutions, but for the most part, we did want to provide the flexibility. I'm excited about this working session. I believe this body can get it done. And so I'm asking that this matter stay in committee for that further conversation. But this is a really exciting moment, and as I stated, you know, this historic council is making history out again. So I wanted to thank the lead sponsors for their leadership and foresight, and noting, again, it marries well with the conversation on student debt that we're just having, the medical debt that people are in, and the fact that we are going to be rebounding some, in many ways, from a pandemic, and a lot of people are living off of their credit cards. So why would we judge them for the rest of their lives about their ability to work and be housed off of a credit report? Thank you so much for this opportunity, and again, I move to keep the, the matter in committee for the working session.
Thank you so much, Counselor Edwards, and as a sponsor on this docket as well. Very important conversation. Before I go on and assign, I want to make sure I make space for a co-sponsor here. Before I call you, Counselor Campbell, I'm going to call upon Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to say that the co-sponsors had an excellent discussion and very informative. What I especially liked about the, the topic, which is very critical, but they included the Human Rights Commission, which will play a critical role in this issue, making sure that any cases are hopefully investigated and documented by the Human Rights Commission, was established in 1984 by Mayor Flynn, reenacted by Mayor Walsh. So I think it was one of the best decisions Mayor Walsh made, was bringing back the Humans, Human Rights Commission. It will play a critical role in the city. Again, I want to say thank you to these sponsors for their incredible work on this important issue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to thank you again for your partnership on this issue, and of course, thank the Chair of the Committee, Counselor Edwards, for her work as well. And I won't reiterate everything, but I think what is critical is, of course, that we do want to get this done, and that we are in a critical moment in time where people are unfortunately continuing to lose their jobs. Of course, their credit is being harmed by the fear of eviction and displacement. But this, of course, should not serve as a barrier to them obtaining a job in the future or in the immediate. And this has been a topic of discussion since 2016, when we initially filed this in partnership with then-Counselor Ayanna Pressley. So looking forward to getting it done. I also wanted to thank the administration folks who showed up and stayed for the entire hearing, which I truly appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, and I'll just add as co-sponsor that I'm really grateful to partner with you, Counselor Campbell, in moving this incredibly important work forward. We have to get it done this year. And it's not, you know, about the history. I appreciate Counselor Edwards bringing the historic council and the historic work that we're doing into this space, but quite frankly, it's just what's needed. We have to step up and provide this kind of leadership, because the residents of our city deserve it, and we've got to make sure that credit is not a barrier for folks, whether we're talking about employment, whether we're talking about housing. So I'm grateful to continue this work, and we, since there is more work, docket 0945 will remain in the committee. We'll now move on to docket 0979. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0979, order for hearing regarding the implementation of the BPS-ready reopening plan.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George, who is Chair of the Committee on Education. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everyone who participated in yesterday's public testimony-only hearing. And we heard from a number of folks right off the bat, sharing their experiences about the reopening, some significant concerns about the reopening, and some, some of the unmet needs of both our educators, our families, and certainly our students. As we've, I think we all are aware now, there are some changes going forward due to the rising rate of COVID in our city, so we will continue to certainly discuss this in, in sort of the public space. We've got a number of hearings upcoming to discuss the reopening plan, both in making sure our students with higher needs or with high needs. All of our students certainly have needs, but special education students, our students experiencing homelessness, our students who we've also, other students who we've determined as high need students certainly need improved access to the services that they require, both to excel academically, but also socially and emotionally. So, so we have that hearing next week, and then we also have an upcoming hearing regarding the plan overall, and then the facilities plan as well. So a lot of education on all of our minds these days, no doubt, and a lot of work to do to make sure that our students are receiving the services that they, that they require and certainly need. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Docket 0979 will remain in the Committee on Education, and will now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions, beginning with docket 1054.
Docket 1054, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss house parties and gatherings during COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, may I suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Flaherty and Braden as original co-sponsors?
Seeing and hearing no objections, the two have been added.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm calling for this hearing to, to discuss large house parties and gatherings in our city, as my neighborhood in South Boston and across District 12 brought this issue to my attention this summer. My constituents are very concerned about these large house parties in our neighborhood, sometimes 20, 30 people without masks, no physical distancing, and oftentimes indoors. They are concerned not only because of what we've seen across the country and the serious potential to become super spreader in the age of COVID-19, but also due to the noise and impact on the quality of life for, for our residents. As these parties are often, they often leave trash and litter on the street and attract rodents and pests. In August, the South Boston elected officials and I wrote a letter to our neighbors advising them, per the instruction of Police Captain Boyle, to call 911 and also report to, report issues to inspectional services. And ISD has been engaging landlords to remind them of housing policies, disturbances, COVID policies, rules, and responsibilities. Unfortunately, we've since witnessed an uptick in this irresponsible and inconsiderate behavior. As a result, I had a Zoom meeting two weeks ago with over 90 neighbors, with the police captain, the Assistant Commissioner of ISD, Commissioner Miller, and again advised neighbors to call 911 and contact ISD about problem property list. I can report that Assistant Commissioner Miller has been excellent, as has Captain Boyle. Just in South Boston, the data shows the complaint calls have increased significantly during this pandemic. With many restaurants and bars operating at limited, limited capacity due to COVID-19, some young people are moving these gatherings and social events to their homes or apartments instead. We don't want these parties to become super spreader events in our neighbors, in our neighborhoods, and cause a spike during the winter months. Governor Baker has said for weeks that the data shows young people are driving the increase in cases in positivity, positivity rates. His COVID-19 Order Number 52 states that there should never be more than 25 persons in a single enclosed indoor space, and failure to comply may result in a civil fine. But we know with that, issues in large house parties still persist. So perhaps we can look at policy changes and strict enforcement, and maybe think about increasing the fines, or have a higher fine for repeat violators. I know that in New York City, for example, individuals who violate the state's order on social gatherings can be fined up to $2,000 for the first offense, and up to $5,000 for a second violation. So I'm filing a hearing order on this issue, meeting with Counselor Flaherty and Braden, so that we can formally talk about how the city of Boston, Health and Human Services, the Public Health Commission, Boston Police Inspection Services, how we can continue working together to better enforce the regulations around house parties, ensure that our neighbors stay healthy. I also want to remind everybody, we're in a pandemic, and it may not be your health, but it might be someone that's elderly or someone, a person with disabilities. So it's about respect and dignity to all of the people, and you might have to put away your parties and your, and your beer cans to make sure that our elderly people are safe. That's critical. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselors Flynn and Braden for their partnership on this important issue. Also like to amend, make an amendment. Also like to amend, make an amendment, the motion for amendment on the final order that we include outdoor next to indoor. So as you can see, in the final order for a hearing, we mentioned indoor, but would also like to include outdoor, particularly given what we experience here in our neighborhood, Counsel Flynn and I, with respect to all the big parties along the beaches. I know we had an incident over at Franklin Field over in Mattapan. We also had an incident in East Boston as well that had resulted in, I think, some violence. So any large gathering, quite frankly. So I know that house parties have been a quality-of-life issue here in the city for a long time, but the presence of COVID-19 has completely raised the stakes on the matter, shifting it from a quality-of-life issue to a major public health issue. We have encouraged residents to call 911 and to report this, as well as to reach out to Inspeccional Services to see whether or not we can investigate and have the property potentially placed on the city's property list, particularly if they continue to have party after party after party. So I'm looking for a robust discussion about how we could more effectively enforce the governor's order in partnership with all stakeholders, Boston Police Department, Inspeccional Service Department, Boston Health Commission, and landlords, tenants, and other concerned residents. I know that we're encouraging folks to call 911. I know, and I'm hearing the frustration from residents and community groups that it comes in as a priority nine call. So it's the lowest priority on the list. And so, you know, they'll do the best of their ability to get there. But because it's coming in as a priority nine, I know a lot of residents are frustrated that they don't feel like they're getting the response that they want. I also know that when you have a large gathering and there's alcohol involved, you know, having a neighbor knock on the door and/or having someone other than law enforcement coming by oftentimes will lead to a mind-your-business, slam door in your face, maybe a face mush or a punch, or other violence. And so I would strongly encourage folks to not take matters into their own hands, despite the frustration level that they're experiencing, and continue to call 911 and continue to reach out to 311 for Inspeccional Services. And let's see if we can kind of work together to curtail this activity. Because as we start to see Boston's numbers tick up, this is going to continue to be a major concern, particularly if we start to roll back some of what we've been able to sort of roll out over the last couple of months, particularly around restaurants and other establishments. So if we're going to start to see a rollback on that front, we're going to see an uptick on the house party side. So that said, I appreciate everyone's attention and look forward to an expedited hearing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am happy to join my colleagues, Counselor Flynn and Counselor Flaherty, on this hearing order. I come from a district here with many gatherings and house parties. Everyone made huge sacrifices in the spring to flatten the curve and limit the spread, and we were successful. But here we are facing into the winter, and we see more house parties all across the country. We're hearing of increased infection rates and hospitals being overwhelmed by folks turning up with COVID-19. So now's the moment. We need to really ask everyone to be responsible and to do their part to try and limit the spread of this infection so that we, until such times as we can find a vaccine. So this is an important hearing. I don't want to be a party pooper, but I think it's really important that we all work together as a community and across generations to try and keep everyone as safe as possible. So I welcome this opportunity for this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any blue hands, we will go right into sign-on. Show of physical hands for those who want to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Baker, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Wu. Please also add the Chair. Docket 1054 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. We'll now move on to Docket 1055. Madam Clerk?
Docket 1055. Counselors Mahia and Campbell offer the following resolution condemning the racist and predatory tactics used by ICE in Boston.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my cosponsor and sister-in-service, Counselor Campbell. A little over two weeks ago, a man was stopped while jogging on the VFW Parkway by three men in two unmarked SUVs with tinted windows. What happened that day is a story many immigrants, myself included, are all too familiar with. A person was stopped in a neighborhood where it looked like he didn't belong because he fit the description. What happened that day made me feel unsafe in a city that I grew up in and spent most of my lifetime living in. It made me think about my mother, who was undocumented for a period of time during my childhood. It made me think about all the times I've looked over my shoulder to review and through my rearview mirror because I thought it was my turn to be stopped. These kinds of actions do not just impact those directly involved. They are triggering and traumatizing to all immigrants across the city. We have an obligation as leaders in our city to do everything that we can to make sure that everyone feels safe and welcomed here. The very first issue our office spoke on was around sanctuary safe spaces. Now, more than ever, we need to bring up that conversation to the forefront because we need to use what little power we have as city leaders to make sure that this never happens again. I would like to thank my colleagues for their quick action in condemning this harassment and thank Counsel Campbell for being my cosponsor. And I also would like to move to suspend the rules that we passed this resolution and do so in the name of making sure that everyone feels embraced in the city.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And just quickly, and I think my cosponsor, Counsel Mahia, would agree. Can we suspend the rules and add Counsel O'Malley as an original cosponsor, given the fact the incident occurred in his district? And of course, he raised it in the council meeting right after to talk about how critically important it is that we didn't let this event just pass us by.
Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel O'Malley has been added as a third cosponsor. Please continue, Counsel Campbell.
Thank you. And thank you, Counsel Mahia, for your leadership on these issues and always sharing pieces of your story as to why this is real and affects residents every single day. This year, I will tell you, has been extremely painful. There are tragic examples, particularly of black men and brown men, being profiled, targeted, even murdered for just walking or running in their own neighborhood. I cannot watch another video of what often starts as a police stop, or worse in the case of Ahmaud Arbery by vigilantes, going from troubling to life-threatening in a matter of minutes. That should not happen anywhere, and certainly not in the city of Boston. The incident between ICE and Bena earlier this month is a painful reminder that ICE agents continue to operate on our streets and are targeting black and brown residents and putting all of our lives at risk. We must continue our advocacy to limit the presence of federal law enforcement in our community and, of course, protect our residents and their rights. This stop was blatantly racist, and this is an example of racial profiling. And while I'm grateful it did not escalate, I know how traumatizing and terrifying it was for the individual involved. I've been in contact with his family, who are also traumatized. It doesn't just affect the individual. It affects the community and the family as well. It's a call to action for all of us to be honest about the racial disparities that exist, not only with respect to ICE and what is happening at the federal level, but there are issues right here in the city of Boston that residents are constantly bringing up with respect to racial profiling. And even our data suggests that in police stops just last year, over 70% of the stops were black residents, even though we only make up a quarter of the population. And I'm proud, actually, to be having a hearing with Counsel O'Malley, not only on this data, but really looking at our practices and protocol within our police department to ensure that we don't continue to see this level of overpolicing in communities of color. Let's commit ourselves to actually doing everything we can to confront and eliminate these disparities. And last, I think it's important to continue to name that black lives do matter and that the reason that folks have pushed really hard for this not to just be a slogan is because of very incidents like this. And if anyone is doubting how this family feels, I push everyone, particularly elected officials, even if it's outside your district, to have a conversation with this individual and his family because it was extremely painful for them and continues to be. I also want to thank and lift up the ACLU who has taken on this case, immediately responded. Of course, want to thank Counsel O'Malley as a district counselor for that area, who also immediately responded, along with state elected from that area, and our Congresswoman Pressley and other members of the federal delegation who stepped up quickly as well. So thank you. Again, thank you, Counsel Mahia, for your leadership and your partnership as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley, the third cosponsor. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, of course, to the two lead sponsors, Counselors Mahia and Counsel Campbell, for their leadership and for including me on this. There are no profound words I have to say. I don't need to illustrate the fact that black men and women are being murdered for wearing a hoodie or selling loose cigarettes or jogging. The Ahmed Aubrey murder of late February of this year was at the hands of white supremacists. There have been others at the hands of law enforcement. And what occurred on the VFW Parkway two weeks ago, thankfully, thank God, did not end up tragically in death, but it was a tragic reminder of how much work we need to do as a city. I've gotten to know Benno a little bit. We've gone running together since then over the last couple of weeks. He's a little, and he's 10 years younger than me, but expecting his new baby soon. I don't think I'm telling tales out of school and, like me, you know, has taken to running during the pandemic as a means to help stay healthy, both mentally and physically, lose weight, you know, me more than him. And he was doing what so many of us do. And to be candid, as a white man, I do without ever thinking there's a risk of something happening. The only risk I have when I run is that I'm going to have shin splints. And thank God, he had the presence of mind and the strength, quite frankly, to pull out his cell phone during this incident. I don't know that I would have had that strength. I certainly don't believe I would have had that presence of mind. Said to him, "Were you worried that you would have been shot when you went for your phone?" With the ICE officer saying that perhaps you were grabbing a weapon. And they said that he had to do it. And thank God that he did because it shouldn't have taken that, but that is what diffused the situation with the ICE officers. You know, this resolution is so important because it again reaffirms, A, the work that we need to do as a city and the fact that we can't, we're not, we can't in good conscience say, "This doesn't happen here. This happens in other cities. This happens in other states. This happens in the South. This happens in the Midwest. This doesn't happen here." This can't happen here, and we have a hell of a lot of work to do. So again, I can't add anything more other than my sincere appreciation for my two colleagues for including me on this important resolution and look forward to continuing the work as long as we are in these positions and beyond. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Royo. Counsel Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to also focus folks on who don't understand necessarily the depth of the issue with ICE and detainees, doing detentions and doing these unlawful stops. The reality is ICE has detained, according to the New York Times and others, thousands of U.S. citizens incorrectly. And when I say detained, I mean held and locked up. Thousands of U.S. citizens incorrectly over the last decade. It's not an issue that gets a lot of attention. The reality is, as a public defender, I often saw ICE targeting not just folks who I represented who were in courts for very minor issues like a failure to produce a license, things like that, but also folks who were coming in to file reports, folks who were looking for protection from the courts, who were then being detained with no notice, with no warning, taken away from their families. And if you see that happen before you, and I have, it's an incredibly traumatic experience. There's no warning. There's no preparation for their children, for people in that situation. And I think what people may not understand is that the barrier for arrest, for a detention, for ICE is so low. Had he had the same name as the person who they were seeking, had he not been able to provide a name and an address, it's very likely that they would have had grounds and the ability to detain him, regardless of the fact that he is a U.S. citizen, regardless of the fact that he was just going for a job. And the reality is, the standard for arrest from an officer to the standard of arrest for an ICE agent is very different. And so we talk about how ICE operates within our communities when they're doing things like racial profiling, when they're selectively choosing who they're arresting and who they're seeking, rather than, you know, being some kind of color-blind body, when we're dedicating resources, ICE resources, specifically to communities that are immigrant-heavy, that are majority people of color. And when we're doing these kinds of grabs while people are just going about their business, I had constituents reach out to me who came from authoritarian countries, people who had fled dictatorships, who had a very difficult time watching that video because it was traumatizing for them to see three men, unmarked, out of an unmarked car, seizing somebody essentially, and all of the ways in which that could have gone wrong and all of the ways in which that reminded them of what they had fled in the first place. And so if we are going to really protect our population, if we're really going to stand up and say, "These things are wrong," we need to identify them when they happen. We need to be outspoken when it occurs. And we really need to be clear that this is not just a threat for undocumented folks. This is not just a threat for people of color. ICE has a history of detaining citizens of this country. They have a history of, I think the New York Times or CNN broke that 545 children will never see their parents again. We do not know where their parents are. This is an agency that has committed, what in other countries we would call war crimes. And the reality is, it needs to be treated that way. And so when we talk about what this looks like, I think it goes back to how we collaborate as a city with ICE, how we work with ICE, how our agencies interact with ICE, because our citizenry require that protection because we're better than this, and our city is better than this. And I think, you know, I want to thank those who brought this forward, but this is on all of us. This isn't just a personal color issue. This isn't just an immigrant issue. This isn't everybody issue. They do these things in our name. They are empowered by us. They do them with our tax dollars. This is a requirement for all of us to stand up and be heard on these issues. And so thank you for this moment to share the realities that we're up against. And I appreciate everybody taking the time to really dig in on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to echo, not even echo, I wanted to emphasize part of this resolution that I'm very proud to sign on to when that opens up is the fact that it states that we, as leaders, have a moral obligation to act and legislate in a way that protects the interests and safety of our constituency. And so I'm calling on our colleague, my colleagues, to, let's get deep and let's think about what that action looks like and what that legislation looks like. We have a trust act. And that trust act is about communication between the BPD, the Boston Police Department, and ICE. This didn't involve the BPD. This was ICE acting a fool, if you will, on our streets and harassing folks in Boston. So what are we going to do? What can we legislate? What can we push on? And how do we hold them accountable as an agency? You know, we have, you know, to me, this is a warning shot. Or if at anything, this is a last warning. Don't ever do this again. If we are going to have any relationship with you in any shape or form, at brick, at the city level, any way, shape, or form, you cannot harass our constituency. You cannot harass people in Boston racially do so and then expect us to work with you in any way, shape, or form. You are losing not just the trust of the constituency, but the trust of the administration, the trust of our law enforcement, and of course, the trust of the council. the trust of our law enforcement, and of course, the trust of the council. There needs to be repercussions for this action and the city needs to more than condemn, needs to say this is the first and last and never will happen again. Otherwise, we don't work with you in any way, shape or form, no exceptions, no nothing, including brick. That's what I'm talking about, meaningful action. We need to also wonder, I mean, I'm happy to research and work with folks about why, why isn't all law enforcement wearing a camera? It shouldn't have been him, the person, the victim, to have to record this and it shouldn't have had to force that camera was his defense. It's called daylight and transparency. If you're truly part of the law enforcement community and truly are trying to keep people safe, you're not scared of either. You are not scared of transparency, you're not scared of daylight, you're not scared of people watching you do your job, which is to be a hero and to protect and serve those of us. That's why it's so just disheartening to me that they did this. This is not individuals. There's a culture within ICE that would allow them to, out of their jurisdiction, right? Out of their any real reason, they are about immigration enforcement, someone is jogging down the street, they have a culture, a lack of accountability, one that clearly is racist, one that is clearly is discriminatory, that they could just do this for joy, for, for, I don't know, whatever giggles that they thought they were getting out of this. They were protecting no one. There was no call about anyone. And I think that's important for us to really push them on their, someone, or I will put a FOIA request in to figure out who were they supposedly going after? What call and what supposed crime that they felt that they needed to investigate any random jogger going by? It's harassment. And we, as a city of Boston, can, we must, as a council today, support this resolution, but we need to go deeper. I want to figure out how we disassociate and hold them accountable as in if this happens ever again, the city of Boston is through with you. What they did is disgusting. But US Senate is sitting to our constituency, to any person here, for no apparent reason besides the fact that he is black. That hurts us all, whatever trust we are trying to build, whatever enforcement and protection and safety that we are trying to maintain. You want to maintain order? You don't let ICE go out of order and act this, this, this way. You really want us to trust and believe when the police say to do something? You cannot let ICE do these obnoxious actions to our constituency. So, I, I am excited about supporting this resolution. I'm excited about pushing even further and taking those actions that we act and legislate in a way that protects the interests and safety of our constituency for this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank Counsel Mahia, Counsel Campbell and Counsel O'Malley for bringing this forward. Learned, I learned a lot about this incident, like many of us over the, over the media, but we had elected officials that really stepped up and addressed it. So, I want to say thank you to my colleagues on the Boston City Council that really worked hard to make sure that civil rights and equal rights are, are part of community policing. I want to say thank you also to my colleague, Michael Flaherty, that worked with Stephen Lynch, Congressman Lynch, and with Mad O'Malley. But I just want to especially say thank you to my colleagues on the City Council for bringing this forward, this important issue. And there's a lot for us to learn about racial profiling from this, from this incident. So, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I don't see any other blue hands. So, let me just add to Counsel Edward's point. And I, first, let me just thank the makers. Thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you, Counsel O'Malley, for your words at our last meeting when this incident happened. It is important that we continue this conversation and that we back up the conversation with real action, as Counsel Edward has noted. And she made a point of repeating, this is not about the individuals, it's about a culture. We often talk about, you know, bad players and rotten apples. We're not dealing with rotten apples. The whole barrel is rotten. That is the challenge that we have to force ourselves to realize. And until we are willing to deal with that barrel, because the barrel will continue to rot the good apples, that's why we've got to deal with the system, with the culture. So, great to see this come forward. Now that there's no other discussion, would love to see who would like to add their names. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Edwards, Counsel Braden, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Bach, Counsel Sabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Wu. Please also add the Chair. Docket 10, oh, wait, nope. Counsel, so these are, this is a resolution. Counsel, please also add Counsel Arroyo, Madam Clerk. Councillors Mahia, Campbell and O'Malley seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 1055. We'll do this by a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Docket 1055, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, Counsel Baker.
I'm running around my house trying to get a, trying to get a signal.
Okay. So, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 1055 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 1055 has been adopted. At this time, I would like to turn the Chair over to Counsel O'Malley, our Vice Chair. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record in place before the body, Docket number 1056.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket number 1056, Councillors Janey and Bach offer the following resolution in support of the Breathe Act presented by the Electoral Justice Project of the Movement for Black Lives, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'm very proud to be sponsoring this resolution alongside my sister-in-service and colleague, Counselor Bach. The Breathe Act, championed by our very own Congresswoman, Ayanna Pressley, was presented by the Electoral Justice Project of the Movement for Black Lives, reimagining what public safety and community empowerment look like and as how we invest our federal dollars. This resolution is to show our support for our Congresswoman and our federal partners as they work to get this done. The Breathe Act encompasses four main ideas: divesting federal funds from incarceration and policing, investing in non-carceral, non-punitive systems that center community safety and black lives, including black mothers, black trans people and women; three, prioritizing funding to build healthy, equitable and sustainable communities; and four, holding political leaders accountable and empowering black communities to guide their own decision-making. Back in June, I wrote and submitted a five-page letter to the mayor, which many of you signed on to, lifting up an agenda for black and brown lives in Boston. And many, much of that is outlined here in the Breathe Act. I'm proud of the work that the council has done since then, not only in public safety and criminal justice reform, but also our banning facial recognition and the recent recommendations around police reform, but also in areas like planning, language access and much more. But as always, there is still more work to do in dismantling the many barriers that continue to be prevalent and continue to push the needle, it says, but I like to say, change the record. We're doing too much of the pushing the needle. We need to change the record and in some instances, we need to break the record altogether so that we are moving forward and that this issue stays at the forefront of all of our work. We need to continue to support our federal partners and those at the state in breaking systemic inequities that impact individuals at the local level, the state and the federal level throughout our city. Therefore, I am proud to present this resolution alongside Counsel Bach and ask that my colleagues suspend the rules and pass, adopt this resolution and support this work moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the District Councillor from Beacon Hill. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Council President. I'm proud to co-sponsor this with her. She described many of the sort of core pillars behind this, but I think what I really want to emphasize, in addition to the fact that it's a way for us to show support for Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley and Rashida Tlaib, who have really been championing this at the federal level, I think that we see all the time at the city level how we need federal leadership here. We have 18,000 police jurisdictions across this country and when you're trying to make change in them one by one, it's really hard. And as we see frequently at the council, a lot of our public safety activities do get funded and supported through federal grants. And so, the type of things that the federal government is prioritizing on the public safety side affect the type of things that we have funding for here at the city level. And while the Breathe Act does lots of things, it's a very comprehensive and multifaceted proposal. One thing it proposes is a brand-new federal agency completely dedicated to community safety but grounded in public health rather than criminal punishment. So, this would be called the Community Public Safety Agency, which would research non-punitive, non-carceral approaches to public safety, provide technical assistance and provide grants that fund this kind of non-punitive, non-carceral approach to public safety in state and local governments. And I think, you know, we've all seen that when, when something's a federal priority, if it's keeping your harbor safe, then suddenly you have a lot of funding for harbor safety. If it were community practices of safety, we would have a lot more resources available for that. And I think a lot of the things that this legislation is supporting at the federal level are the type of things that have been supported by activists here in Boston and many on the council, including funding community-based organizations and, you know, increasing the number of trained counselors, restorative justice practices in schools, allowing the dispatching of specialized responders who are equipped to respond to emergency situations in an unarmed way. So, to me, you know, we've always got to be linking our level of the spectrum up and knowing what it is that we can and can't do, but also knowing where we really need that robust partnership. And I'm proud to know some of the folks who have been working behind the scenes to get this drafted and really proud as ever of our Congresswoman for championing it and would, would love the council support for this resolution. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. The Chair now recognizes the at-large councillor from South Boston. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, and this is really just true to the lead sponsors. Does anyone have a copy of this federal legislation? The previous speaker had indicated that it was pretty lengthy and, so I just, particularly if we're moving for a suspension and passage, I would like to have the document. I'd like to sort of learn about some of the intricacies of it. I understand as it just was framed that it's a framework for reform, but if it's, if it's that comprehensive, I think it may be like a 15 or 20-page document, I just would like that to be included in our packet and/or if someone could send it to me, maybe we'll take a recess, we read through the 13, 14, 15 pages and we can make an informed decision on all of the parts of it. I assume that I'll probably believe and be willing to support a significant portion of it, but maybe not all of it. So, I don't want to be boxed out here. So, through you, the Chair, to the makers, do they have a copy of the actual federal legislation?
We can get that to you. We can get, I'll ask someone on the back end here to, and I'll ask someone on my team too, if you could get an email out with the legislation to the entire council. Did you have any other comments?
No, that's it. I just, I don't know much about it other than I see the whereas, but colleague, the previous speaker had indicated that it was pretty comprehensive and engaging and involving lots of different areas and I just don't have enough, I don't know enough about it.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll make sure it gets out to folks.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the other original co-sponsor, Counsel Bach, perhaps to answer, I believe, or perhaps to follow up with the question posed by the at-large councillor from South Boston. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Counsel, Counsel Flaherty. The, so, yeah, we'll send, we'll send over the proposal. It's technically a federal bill proposal right now rather than a formal bill, although it, the way, I don't know if folks know this, but whereas for we draft all of our legislation here in the council, at the congressional level, actually, you put together like a full description of what you're achieving with the legislation and then there's actually a, a sort of all-purpose congressional legal team that drafts the final language. And so, and so that piece is still in process. And so, really what I think we're asking folks to support here with the resolution today is the, the sort of full federal bill proposal of the kind of core goals of this and what, what's trying to be achieved. But we have, I will send over a PDF to everybody. And, and I just, I guess I would encourage Counsel Flaherty, I think that the kind of, the kind of diligence that he's describing would be very important were we in Congress voting on the final bill before us. But I think the spirit of the resolution would be supporting, supporting the desire for these kinds of principles to drive action at the federal level. And I, I trust, I trust our siblings, older siblings perhaps, in the federal legislature to take care of the Ts and the Is on that front. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. I think that that's an apt sort of framework to explain Counsel Bach and Counsel Janey what's before us today. Before I get to further speakers, Counselor Flaherty, does that satisfy?
Yeah, just if I'm gonna, if the council or me specifically, but I'm gonna go on in, on record as supporting the Breathe Act, I would, one, like to have a copy of it and, two, like to know, you know, how comprehensive it is and, and again, you know, do I support every facet of it, the framework piece of it and us calling for some of the changes in that framework, of course, that makes some sense, but I'd really like to see what else it entails for me to feel comfortable voting on this today, just as a matter of basic fairness to, to me as a, as a member of the body and wanting to have the information and be able to read it myself, make an informed decision and then cast a vote to either support adoption of the resolution, unless this is going to go into committee and this is something we can hash out, obviously, at a hearing, it's different, that's, that would be completely different. But if we're being asked to suspend the rules and adopt resolution, I'm like the, kind of, like an opportunity to go.
No, certainly understood, Counsel Flaherty. I will get to other speakers and I know Counsel Baker is next in the queue and others that wish to speak on this or discuss this matter, please raise your blue hand. It is my understanding, purview of the Chair, that this is not dissimilar from action this body took on a resolution, I believe, last year, it may have predated some members of this body sponsored by the at-large councillor from Rosendale in support of the Green New Deal insofar as it was supporting, one thing that I was very, very proud to co-sponsor, supporting the, the framework of sort of a comprehensive set of legislative priorities, if that's a right characterization, Madam President, Counsel Bach. So, it is the two authors, as I understand it, are calling for a suspension of the rules and adoption or a vote on this, on this hearing, or, excuse me, on this resolution, which I certainly support and will add my name at the current time to do so. Of course, those watching know that an individual can, it only takes one councillor to object to prevent a vote or a rule change which would prevent this vote. So, we're not there yet. Hopefully, we can have some more further discussion or have some more questions answered, but just want to sort of illustrate the process before us currently. The Chair now recognizes the District Councillor from Dorchester. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to agree with, with Counsel Flaherty on this one. We're gonna, we're gonna vote on legislation, framework of legislation, you know, that's very comprehensive, as, as Kenzie stated, there's things in here where divesting in prisons, divesting in, you know, there's a lot of things in there that, that, that go contrary to what I believe. So, being middle here like this, and again, I think the right thing to do is invoke Rule 31, but I won't do that because I know how that will play out for me personally, but I don't see how we're supposed to just get pigeonholed like this and sign on to something like that, sign on and vote for this. It's not, it's not framework that I support. So, it, it's just, I find it unfair, unfair that we're, we're looking to do something like this without, in our packet, having the entire Breathe Act here. I just, I just think it, it feels like another slam dunk from this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Again, just for the record to be set straight, this is not a late file. This resolution was posted probably last Friday and was before the council Monday afternoon by noon. Thank you to the Clerk's office.
We have legis, did we have the, the full legislation with that packet?
Full. We'll, we'll get to that point, but my, my point is just illustrating Counsel Baker.
Because we're voting, we're voting to support legislation here, whatever, people want to say framework or whatever, but we're voting to support legislation and to not have the legislation for a full week before us is, again, another slam dunk. Should be, we should be going to committee if we really want to talk about this, but again, I remember what happened to me in March when I invoked Rule 31, so I'm not going to do that here today.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. The Chair now recognizes the District Councillor from Hyde Park. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
I just have a question for the makers. As a resolution, you're allowed to know or abstain, correct?
The Chair now recognizes, I'll only choose Counsel Bach because I see her- The chair now recognizes, I'll only choose Counselor Bach because I see her camera is live.
Sorry, can the question?
I guess I will ask Chair answer Counselor Roy's question. The answer is yes. A resolution before a body, you can vote yes, no, or abstain as a member.
Okay, thank you. And I think you cleared up that we did receive this packet on Monday from the council staff. So if you wanted to look up the Breathe Act, which I did, you could do.
That is also correct, Counselor Roy.
Thank you. Add my name.
Thank you. We'll get to that in a moment, but we certainly shall. The chair now recognizes the district counselor from East Boston, Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, just following up on the clarifications from Counselor Arroyo and for those who are watching. So the first vote, as I understand it, would be whether we can vote ultimately on this resolution. Am I correct to suspend, to sustain the rules and vote today?
That is, well, it's my understand, interpretation as chair, yes, you are correct. Although the way I would phrase it is the two sponsors have asked to suspend the rules and put this before the body, in which case, in the, it's the opinion of the chair that it is before the body. By Roberts' Rules of Orders, and the clerk will, will clarify this if I'm mistaken, it, or by the council rules, it would only take one individual to to
Object.
Bid a vote before the body on something being, a vote being, on a matter that's introduced that day. Now, as has been said, there is an opportunity, if an individual does not support this bill or has more questions, to not prevent it from being before us, but by still being able to vote his or her conscience, so to speak, or his or her desired vote on this. And then the other option, of course, would be if these co-sponsors would want to refer it to committee, which it would be referred to committee if, if one member objected to a, this being placed or voted, action taken today.
And so, again, just to be clear, if, if, if people are not comfortable with the language as it is and they chose to abstain, for example, the vote still could go before the body and a majority of the body could pass this, suspend and pass.
That is correct, Counselor Edwards. Again, it is my understanding, and the chief sponsor can correct me, that with the Green New Deal resolution, several counselors abstained, and I know one certainly voted against it with a majority of the body voting in support of it. Thank you. The chair, thank you, Counselor Edwards. The chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Asavi George, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the lead sponsors of this resolution. I will add my name to this resolution during the appropriate time, but also think that it may be very beneficial for us to have a public discussion about this act as it's been presented, as the framework has been presented, and a deeper conversation. Why not have that conversation in addition to also supporting this resolution? Obviously, understand and appreciate the rules as they are the guiding factors of our body, but will, should the opportunity arise, add my name to this. But also would appreciate a very sort of robust and public discussion about the Breathe Act and its implications for us here in Boston in particular. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Asavi George. Any more discussion on this? Or would the two co-sponsors wish to add anything before I ask for co-sponsors officially? Seeing and hearing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please add, as co-sponsors to docket 1056, Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, Counselor Anissa Asavi George, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Julia Mahia, Counselor Andrea Campbell, Counselor Lydia Edwards, Counselor Michelle Wu, please add the chair's name. So, just so we are clear, right now, on action that was put before the body when this was with the first two speakers, counselors, the council president, Kim Janey, and Counselor Kenzie Bach are asking for the suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1056. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt, you've got to call the roll.
Roll call.
Call, vote.
Fair enough. No, no problem. Thank you, Madam President. All right, so counselors Janey and Bach are asking for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1056. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Counselor Arroyo.
Dystastically, yes.
Yes. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asavi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asavi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mahia.
All day, every day, yes.
Counselor Mahia, all day, every day, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1056 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Am I continuing, Madam President, on docket 1057?
No, I'll come back for 1057. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that. So docket 1056 has been adopted, and we're now moving on to docket 1057. Madam Clerk?
Docket 1057, Counselors Mahia and Edwards offer the following resolution urging placement of a ballot box outside Houses of Incarceration in Boston.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor. Counselor Mahia, are you with us?
Yes, sorry, I wasn't sure if you can hear me. Sorry about that. Yes, Madam President, I would also like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Campbell as a third sponsor.
Rule 12.
Rule 12.
Okay, seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Campbell has been added.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel like we say this every election, but the election coming up is going to be the most important one of our lifetime. With everything that's been going on, our lives are at the ballot this year. Every single vote will matter, believe me, I know, I won by one, which is why we have to do everything that we can to make sure that everyone who's eligible to vote has access to the ballot box. During a working session held last week, we heard of the amazing efforts being made to place ballot boxes all across the city. A total of 17 have been placed in areas that our individuals were familiar with that would be under surveillance at all times. Counselor Edwards, my amazing co-sponsor and who always comes to the rescue when I'm trying to push a point that nobody wants to hear, made a great point for too many people. Houses of Correction is a place that individuals are familiar with. And although Houses of Correction meet both those requirements as of right, as of right now, there are no plans in place to place a ballot box there, meaning there are nearly 600 eligible voters in Suffolk County who may not be able to easily cast their ballots. So this resolution is a call to action. We have 13 days to place a ballot box outside of a House of Correction in Boston. Of all of the barriers that have been put in the way to prevent people from voting, this is one of the easiest to tear down. It's just one ballot box. We can do this. And I will be sending this resolution along with a prepared letter to the Secretary of Commonwealth in hopes that he will listen to our calls and make this election fair and equal for all. I move that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution and let it be known that at the end of the day, those who are most impacted and live in the realities deserve the right to decide who should be representing them. And this is an opportunity for us here in the city of Boston to lead with that. So I'm encouraging my colleagues to enthusiastically sign on on this resolution and do right by all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I wanted to acknowledge the work of Counselor O'Malley, who actually initiated this conversation specifically about the safety and inclusion of all people despite our pandemic in our democratic process. So I want to thank him. Counselor Flynn also attended the, the hearing, as, as did Counselor Bach, and all of us were, and Counselor Braden. And I apologize if I missed my other colleagues who attended. Of course, Counselor Mahia was there. And the goal really was to keep pushing forward despite the moment that we're in. And what we've seen is the Elections Department, to their credit, has made sure that many of us were voting at levels that we had never before. We went from two to 17 ballot boxes, drop-off boxes in the city of Boston between the primary and the general election. These are all good things. These are all headed in the right direction. And yes, Counselor Mahia brought up those who are incarcerated. And to her, and at first I said, huh, I didn't really quite understand what she was talking about. But as she proceeded, and no, I don't need to translate you, you're just speaking truth to power. And sometimes we just need to say it again and over and over again, Counselor Mahia. I really appreciate working with you. Wanted to say, at the end of the day, we concluded that we, we found out the standards for a drop box were very simple, that it's in a secure place, in a highly frequented, and it's publicly owned area. So that's why libraries are ideal for this. But as I noted, the House of Corrections is publicly owned, it is a secure place, and many people frequent it. Now, there was a vote to help those who are currently incarcerated to have their ballots dropped off. If their loved ones brought it in for them to vote, they could drop it off right there. It was also to remind people who are going in and out of the House of Corrections, you matter, your voice matters, and don't forget to vote. And we also felt that this particular moment, it was low-hanging fruit, that we could at least put a ballot box that's secure at the House, in the front of the House of Corrections, in front of the major entrances, that is already a secure place. But just to give some background for folks to understand, people with misdemeanors can vote. There are a lot of people on pre-trial who haven't been convicted of any crime, who are incarcerated as well. On any given day, there are 8,000 to 10,000 eligible voters in Massachusetts who are incarcerated, 8,000 to 10,000 people. And so are, are we as municipality, are we as government officials, are we as a community pushing to make sure their voice matters just as much as everyone else is when they see the sandwich boards, when they see the, the ballots coming into their homes? Are we really putting the same effort into them? Have we already dismissed them and denied them their voice in democracy? I hope not. And I think that, again, this is low-hanging fruit to put a ballot box there. Other things that we should consider, quite frankly, as the municipality is with a certain, within making sure that we implement policies going forward, that within a certain amount of days before an election, that the absentee ballot applications will be provided by the Elections Department specifically for those in Suffolk County and Boston who are incarcerated, that there should be a concerted effort from our city to lead the way. We also need to make sure that there's communication and coordination between our Elections Commission and the sheriff. I know the sheriff has come out, at least for his facility, and other sheriffs have come out to say that they have provided this. I think that is absolutely wonderful, but that's him going above and beyond. We have a Department of Elections, and I want them to be part of that conversation. And finally, we need to make sure that people can use their place of incarceration as their residence and make sure that they understand that, that they can use it as their residence and not be waiting for a ballot that they could have applied for, going to their home address that they don't get because they're currently incarcerated. So these are things that we could push for, advertise, advocate for, and just outright for our Elections Department to really put, get themselves involved right away. It's about making our state and our process more democratic. It's about not dismissing humanity and people who are incarcerated, who have the right to vote and in some cases haven't been convicted of crime at all, they're just pre-trial. They actually just didn't have the probation money or the bail money to get, to avoid that. So let's be clear about who we are incarcerating as well. So I just wanted to say that. I'm very proud to be a co-sponsor of this resolution. Again, thanking the lead sponsor of the entire conversation, which was Counselor O'Malley, for making sure that we even got to this point. So thank you so much. Thank you so much, Counselor Mahia as well, for your leadership.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Mahia, for your leadership. And thank you, Counselor Edwards, as well, for the partnership. And yes, thank you to Counselor O'Malley for continuing the, the critical conversation with respect to not only the most important presidential election of our lifetime, but how, you know, voting in every election matters, and the work you've done in that space is greatly appreciated. I'll be quick, you know, why I'm so excited by this is, one, on the voter awareness piece, there is such misinformation in the community that there are so many folks who do not know that if they are formally incarcerated, pre-trial detainees, or pre-trial anything, that they have the right to vote in our elections. And whether it is putting, making it easier in terms of access with a mailbox so that they know that, they see that, or that their family members who are engaging with those who are incarcerated are also aware of this, it goes a long way in just the voter awareness piece. I was recently on a radio station with Pastor, Pastor Hobbs was there, but with Priscilla Flint, Pastor Hobbs chimed in on the work he was doing in this regard, particularly with Sheriff Tompkins, who was proactively working to ensure that people are aware that they have the right to vote. So want to thank him as well, and of course, we included him in the resolution. And then on the second piece, I guess I'm borrowing Counselor Mahia's point, all means all, right? So literally, if we want full participation and to see our numbers go up, we have to make it easier. We've done a lot to push for early voting, mailing in ballots, ensuring that those who are unable to cast their ballot on their own have some assistance, language, access, you name it. Breaking down barriers is critically important. And when you look at what's happening across this country with respect to voter suppression, which is real, we should be thinking about anything and everything we can do to make sure that the Commonwealth is a leader with respect to these efforts. So really proud to partner with Counselors Mahia and Edwards on this. Thank you for your leadership in the follow-up after that hearing, which I wasn't able to participate in, but I saw online. And again, taking action when you hear legitimate things that we could be doing and reasonable things we could be doing at the city level to make it easier for folks to access such an important right. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name, Madam President, and just want to thank the sponsors of this resolution. I, I think it's a good idea also ensuring that the personnel at the jail or the House of Correction also have the ability to, since it's in a public location, also have the ability to drop their ballot off. So it'll make it easier for the court personnel and the, and the Sheriff's Department as well, making it easier for them to drop off their ballot. So I think it's very helpful in that regard. And for a lot of the families that do visit their loved ones, knowing that there's a ballot, you know, in the lobby somewhere secure, will make it easier for that family to drop off their ballot. So I just want to thank the sponsors that, I think this will be helpful to, to a lot of people. So please add my name.
You so much. Not seeing any other blue Zoom hands for discussion, we will move for adding your name to this resolution, show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, we just heard from Counselor Flynn adding his name. Please add Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Bach, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Asavi George, Counselor Wu, Counselor Mahia, you're already on it. I think I have, everyone, please also add the chair.
Who's that?
Also add Counselor Flaherty, thank you.
Madam President, my power just went out, so I'm just experiencing some difficulties. I'll try to reboot here soon.
Wonderful, thank you. Sorry about that, that you're experiencing that. Okay, everyone has signed on who wants to sign on? Yes? Wonderful. Counselors Mahia, Edwards, and Campbell seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1057. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 1057, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asavi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asavi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
We can't hear Flynn.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1057 has received Counsel Wu yes Madam President docket number 1057 has received a unanimous vote
Thank you so much docket 1057 has been adopted and we will now move on to docket 1058
Docket 1058 Counsel Braden offered the following resolution regarding the Alston multimodal improvement project
Thank you so much the chair recognizes Counsel Braden Counselor Braden you have the floor
Thank you Madam Chair in 1964 the Massachusetts Turnpike Extension was built and it cut through Alston and Brighton and through Chinatown and effectively took large portions of our communities away and blocked access in Alston to the river and since nineteen and since 2004 the Massachusetts Department of Transportation has been planning a new Alston multimodal improvement project and realignment of the Mass Pike this is a 1.3 to a 1.6 billion dollar project and would last from six to 10 years it is a once in a lifetime opportunity to correct a wrong that was done in the past or a a transportation infrastructure project that greatly impacted our neighborhood and we have an opportunity to make it right one proposal was to replace the viaduct with another viaduct and but there's great deal of community support for an all ad grade project option which would mean that we would take away the viaduct and we would improve access to the river for folks living in Alston this is a huge civil engineering project with many many challenges but the Secretary of Massachusetts Department of Transportation has requested submissions for the a modified all upgrade option and in the area around the throat which is close to BU this the rail line the highway the Massachusetts Pike and the Stoll Drive and then the Paul White Cycle Track all together in a very very narrow area it's about most it's about most important that we continue to create walkable and bikeable neighborhoods well connected with access to the river and that that the options for safe cycling or and pedestrian access are considered in all of the options being considered any design and design elements should improve the Charles River Riverbank and the parkland along the river and and we really strongly advocate that the environmental aspects of this project be considered and that in the in past times when this project was originally constructed the car was king and and we know that 150,000 150,000 cars on our vehicles come into Boston on that road every day as we look forward to a 21st century solution we want to consider multimodal transportation options including train commuter trains shared bus lanes bicycle tracks and north-south connections as well so I I'm asking my colleagues to urge the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to offer due diligence and serious consideration to design elements which will prioritize a livable walkable and bikeable riverbank and parkland for all including an upgrade option for a design for the throat area I respectfully ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and pass this resolution thank you
Thank you so much the chair recognizes Counsel Bach Counsel Bach you have the floor
Thank you so much Madam President I wanted to commend Counsel Braden on bringing this to the council and also strongly express my support although the project in question will really unlock this huge community potential for the area that Counselor Braden represents in Alston technically the throat is just inside of my district District Eight so I wanted to express strong support for this and say actually I was very cheered recently to see Boston University offering there's there's a whole set of engineering challenges here and they've offered a little bit more of a margin of their land to help make this upgrade option possible our transportation department for the city of Boston has been advocating very strongly for something that really takes into consideration walkers bikers you know transit users and kind of the possibility for a real new neighborhood here but I can't emphasize enough how important it is for everyone's voice to be heard on this because unfortunately what you're really doing is an urban planning project with huge potential for our city and this neighborhood specifically but the agency doing it fundamentally builds highways right and like when you're when you're a hammer all you see is a nail and so a lot of these considerations that the Council that Counselor Braden is raising have really been hammered from a different angle by a better city and lots of local Alston Brighton advocates for many many years and some of the things that the upgrade option would make possible I mean not only would the sort of ability to connect to the esplanade and the rest of the city across that line be really transformed but there's a potential to to sort of reutilize the Grand Junction Railroad as a way to really open up connections across from Kendall Square sort of over to Alston Brighton there's just a lot of things that are on the table here and short sighted thinking of the kind that we have seen a few times in this process and that is reflected I think in a spreadsheet recently published by the Department of Transportation for thinking through this decision is going to set us back in a huge way so this really is a generational moment I think Counselor Braden is right to bring it to the whole council and ask for everybody's support and and I think we in the council expressing our view on this we would be at one with the mayor's administration and our transportation department that's also been very vocal on this front so Madam Chair please add my name
Thank you Thank you so much the chair recognizes Counsel Flynn Counsel Flynn you have the floor
Thank you Madam President Madam President please add my name I just want to thank Counsel Braden for highlighting so many health related issues as it relates to the Mass Pike I know she referenced Chinatown and you know Alston and Brighton is lucky to have a leader like Counsel Braden and and the reason I bring this up Madam Madam President is my neighborhood in Chinatown because of the Mass Pike we're dealing with terrible public health related issues because of the Mass Pike because of the highway system because of the trains in and out from South Station the the truck route from Maine to Florida it there's no it's not a coincidence that we have the highest asthma rate of any neighborhood practically in the country in Chinatown so you know having an advocate like Counsel Braden addressing those issues in Alston and Brighton is invaluable so I just wanted to highlight her incredible work on public health issues and please add my name thank you Madam President
Thank you so much thank you so much not seeing any other discussion let's show of physical hands for who wants to add their name Madam Clerk if you could please capture Counsel Flynn Counsel O'Malley Counselor Edwards Counselor Mahia Counselor Flaherty I believe you have Counsel Bach Counselor Asabi George Counselor Baker Counselor Campbell Counselor Wu please also add the chair Counsel Baker we've got you I think we've got everyone who wants to be on there please also add the chair Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1055 Madam Clerk would you please call the roll
1058
Oh I'm sorry 1058 yes
So docket 1058 Counselor Arroyo
Yes
Counsel Arroyo yes Counsel Baker
Yes
Counsel Baker yes Counsel Bach
Yes
Counsel Bach yes Counsel Braden
Yes
Counsel Braden yes Counsel Campbell
Yes sorry about that
That's okay Counsel Campbell yes Counsel Edwards
Yes
Counsel Edwards yes Counsel Asabi George
Yes
Counsel Asabi George yes Counsel Flaherty
Yes
Counsel Flaherty yes Counsel Flynn
Yes
Counsel Flynn yes Counsel Janey
Yes
Counsel Janey yes Counsel Mahia
Yes
Counsel Mahia yes Counsel O'Malley
Yes
Counsel O'Malley yes and Counsel Wu
Yes
Counsel Wu yes Madam President docket number 1058 has received a unanimous vote
Yes wonderful thank you so much docket 1058 not 1055 1058 has been adopted and now at this time I am going to turn the chair over to our vice chair Counsel O'Malley as I'm on this next docket Counsel O'Malley you have the floor thank you
Thank you Madam President Madam Clerk would you please read into the record in place before the body docket number 1059
Thank you Mr. Vice President docket 1059 Counsel Flynn offered the following resolution in support of naming the community room in the South End Library the Marlene Newhouse Community Room and I hope I pronounced that closely
Thank you Madam Clerk the chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston Counselor Flynn you have the floor
Thank you Mr. Vice President Mr. Vice President may I suspend rule 12 and add President Janey and Counsel Baker as original co-sponsors to this resolution
Seeing and hearing no objection to the suspension of rule 12 the council president and the district council from Dorchester are hereby added as original co-sponsors on docket 1059 please proceed Counsel Flynn
Thank you Mr. Vice President Mr. Vice President Marlene Newhouse is the retiring founder of Friends of the South End Library and has made tremendous contributions to not only the South End Library but also to the South End community I I think all of us who represent the South End know just how much Marlene has done for our neighborhood that's why I'm proud to partner with President Janey and Counsel Counsel Baker the board of the Friends of the South End Library recently reached out and wanted to honor Marlene by naming the community room on the second floor of the library the Marlene Newhouse Community Room part of the process to do that requires a vote by the Boston City Council to support this request so we are filing this resolution today in support as part of the process of naming a library room after someone to give a little bit more background about Marlene she led the creation of Friends of the South End Library to support a renovation of the South End Library in the Library Park in 2008 and I would also like to acknowledge Mayor Walsh his role but I'd also like to acknowledge Rep Aaron Michalowicz and Rep John Santiago as well in in of course my colleagues Counsel Janey and Counsel Baker and with Marlene's leadership Friends of the South End Library established a variety of popular programs in the South End Library such as the South End Writers Easter egg hunts for the community jazz and blues summer concerts and much more Marlene was also instrumental in transforming transforming the South End Library Park into a community green space with a central plaza with seating planting a butterfly garden and an automated water system these are just some of the things that Marlene did during her time as the head of the Friends of the South End Library I think she's completely deserving of being recognized for her work and and I hope that we can help get the community room named after her I ask that we suspend and pass this resolution today so that the Friends of the South End Library can get what they need for this request thank you Mr. Vice President and I'd like to ask my co-sponsors if they would also like to add anything as well
Thank you Counsel Flynn the chair now recognizes the council president Counsel Janey you have the floor
Thank you so much I want to start by thanking my colleagues Counsel Flynn and Counsel Baker for their partnership I am proud to support I am proud to support this resolution on the renaming of the South End Library Community Room after Marlene Newhouse who has been instrumental in advocating for necessary renovations to the library and the library park Marlene like many unsung heroes strives to make her community a better place and inviting for all before retiring for many years she led the Friends of the South End Library as you heard from Counsel Flynn and they've worked hard to build a community and strengthen ties between residents and they organized many events you heard Counsel Flynn talk about the jazz and the blue summer concerts the Easter egg hunts and really taking care of the library park and creating a butterfly garden I'm really proud to have her as a South End resident and look forward to working with her and many of the residents and electeds in the future as Counsel Flynn mentioned in order to rename the community room the first step is passing this resolution on the council I encourage all of my colleagues to add their name and support this resolution for those who know Marlene she is just a fire you know she's out there just getting it done there's so much activity in this room this room in particular in the South End is such an important room because it's where so much whether you're talking about the South End Forum whether you're talking about the Ward Ford meetings if you're talking about anything happening in this neighborhood the work is happening right upstairs so it's very fitting to to name this room in her honor so I'm encouraging all of my colleagues to join us in supporting this resolution I want to thank my good friend dear friend Counsel Flynn for his leadership and his partnership working in the South End and want to thank Counsel Baker for joining us as well and many thanks to Marlene for all of her work and her amazing advocacy in the South End thank you
Thank you Madam President the chair now recognizes the district council from Dorchester Counselor Baker you have the floor
Thank you Madam Chair for just playing me to be part of this more absolutely uses this volunteer opportunity to create a full-time job for herself like we know
I'm sorry I'm sorry to interrupt
And one of the things that I think wrong is we tend to name things after
Counsel Baker Counsel Baker I apologize for cutting you off but we're having
He's still
I'll text him
Thanks thank you Madam thank you Madam Counsel Baker can you hear me Counsel Baker if you can we're having some technical difficulties there may be some wifi
I can hear you
Issues in Dorchester as well as South Boston We cannot hear you you're very choppy and coming in and out we can if you want to maybe try to connect just the audio again we can wait a moment because I know you want to speak to this and we may have just lost Counsel Baker I see Counsel Flaherty's back I I know Counsel Baker wanted to speak on this and and the point that I could hear through some choppiness was about how it's important to we often do these after someone has passed away so so it's important to recognize the good work of our legendary Bostonians while they're with us so I'm hopeful that Counsel Baker will be able to return on we will come back to him I do see a video so Counsel Baker if you want to get sit well let's try now sound check Counsel Baker
Can you hear me now
I can it's a little bit choppy but it's markedly better than earlier so please proceed
Okay sorry sorry about that I'll be quick I'm happy to sign on with with Counsel and Counsel
Counsel Baker if you can stop your video that may make the that may lessen the bandwidth demand and allow for clearer clearer voice so I'm going to come back to you I'm going to Counsel Asabi George next we will then return to you but I'd urge you to turn your video off and just have the audio feature so we will return to you Counsel Baker whose screen is currently frozen I hope you heard that Counsel the chair now recognizes the Outlaw Council from Dorchester Counsel Anissa Asabi George the floor is yours
Thank you very much Mr. Vice Chair and thank you to the makers to Counsel Flynn Counsel Janey Counsel Baker for bringing this before us I've gotten to know Marlene over the last very many years and her passion her love for her community is certainly amazing but I think what her most significant contribution has been to the community of the South End is really opening the doors of the library to so much more than just reading and including and welcoming all members of the of the immediate neighborhood and beyond to I've gone to a couple of book readings and author meetings and discussions about topics a very wide ranging and so to bring together members of the community in such in such the way that she has in her role as leader of the role as leader of the Friends of the South End Library really does demonstrate, I think, her commitment and her commitment, which will continue certainly in the many years to come, to that community especially. One note I want to make is we often hear sort of the greater programs that are organized through Central Library, and just in the shadows of the Central Library lies the South End Library. And Marlene has, and through her work and through the programming that's happened through the Friends, has sort of uplifted it, I think, in many ways, far beyond some of the program, programming that happens at the Central Library. So just thanks to her and her efforts and her, the foundation she's laid for those that will lead the organization going forward. I hope I have stalled long enough for Council Baker to, to reengage. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you again to the makers for putting this before us.
Thank you, Council Asabi George. We shall soon see if you filibustered long enough. Council Baker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Can you hear me? Oh, okay. I'll leave my, I'll leave my camera off. I'm just happy to be part of this, this partnership with Council Flynn and Council Janey. Maureen has turned this, this volunteer effort into a full-time job, like a lot of people in our neighborhoods, the way they care for, for their things that are dear to them in our neighborhoods. One of the things that I think we do wrong is we, we honor people after they pass away. This is a great way for us to, to give, to give Maureen a little bit of props, you know, while she's still here living with us. So thank you. I hope everybody heard that.
Thank you, Council Baker. We heard it loudly and clearly, and I will just take the chair's prerogative to agree with everything you just said. I did not know Marlene, although I feel like I know her with the stories. And one of the things that I was very proud to have done early on in my council career was to name the room at the West Roxbury Library after Alice Hennessy, who was a former Boston City Council staff director for many, many years. She was Mayor Tom Menino's right-hand. I know the clerk, and she worked very closely together. And we did it after she passed away. She died relatively suddenly, but her husband, Bill, was able to be there. And then he passed away shortly after, so to at least have that opportunity was great. And I think this is just such a wonderful tribute that I will be proud to support. Not seeing any further discussion on docket 1059, I'd like to now ask if there'd be any counselors wishing to add their name as cosponsors. Madam Clerk, please add Council Michael Flaherty. Please add Council Julia Mahia. Please add Council Michelle Wu. Please add Council Liz Braden. Please add Council Kenzie Bach. Please add Council Ricardo Arroyo. Please add Council Lydia Edwards. Please add Council Andrea Campbell. Please add the chair's name. And on docket 1059, counselors Flynn, Janey, and Baker move for a suspension of the rules and adoption. And I'm sorry, did I neglect to add Council Kenzie Bach as a cosponsor? Oh, okay.
Got her, yeah.
Got her, great. So counselors Flynn, Janey, and Baker move for the suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1059. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. You are muted, Madam Clerk.
Oh, dear. So sorry about that.
No trouble.
Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bach.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards. Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George.
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Excuse me, Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Mr. Vice President, docket number 1059 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilor O'Malley, and we'll move on in our agenda. No late files, which is a good thing, so we'll skip down to green sheets. No one wishing to remove anything from the green sheets, that's great. Consent agenda. Wonderful, no additions. So at this, at this time, the chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. For the consent agenda, Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards.
Yeah.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George.
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President, the consent agenda was adopted with a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. The consent agenda has been adopted, so we'll now move on to announcements. Show of blue hands. Blue hands, any? Oh, the chair recognizes Council Edwards. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Sorry, I couldn't, I raised my hand.
Couldn't find your blue hand, it's okay.
I'm so sorry. I just want to remind my colleagues today after our meeting, we are going to be, I hope you will join me for a quick presentation from Chris Diminelli, from the executive director from the Boston Groundwater Trust. He will do a wonderful presentation that a lot of, all of us have gone through. It's kind of a, I hate to describe it to the newbies, a form of hazing, if you will. You will find out that our entire city is on a set of pilings, and that if those pilings become exposed to, to air or water, you, we will sink into the, into the, what was formerly marshland. And I, I was never the same after that presentation. Every single little plug and whatnot I see on the ground, I know that at least someone's monitoring that. I say that as a, as a form of humor, but it really is kind of life-changing. You have no idea. And so I encourage you to come, hear about it as newbies, to learn about what we can do, and also to get the word out about how there's, I know Chris Diminelli is pushing for more infrastructure, monitoring infrastructure in places like Roxbury and East Boston and other, other parts of the city, and I formally support that. So I hope you'll join me. It's a quick Zoom, 20 minutes, and so we can learn a little bit more about our city and the infrastructure that supports it.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I just want to echo what Council Edwards stated about the Groundwater Trust. I'm actually a member of the committee, and it's a big issue, not only in East Boston, but in the Bay Village, as Kenzie Bach knows, and it's a big issue in the South End and downtown Boston as well. So it's, it'll be a very informative discussion. So I want to thank Council Edwards for bringing in Christian, who will provide an excellent background on, on this program. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other announcements from colleagues? Well, I'm getting ready to, felt like I was going to sneeze. No other comments or announcements from colleagues? I'll just mention a few. One, want to recognize officially that we have a new council liaison, so want to say welcome to Fernando Ortiz. I believe he has signed on to this Zoom. I know he, you won't see his face, but wanted to officially welcome him. I know Neil is still with us. We certainly want to extend our deepest gratitude to Neil Doherty for all of his work, working with this council. He's been the only liaison that I've known in my time on the council. So Neil, we, we are very grateful to you, and we welcome Fernando. I want to just take a moment to, again, thank my colleagues, to thank central staff, to thank my own staff. As you see, we've had a number of technical difficulties here dealing with the Zoom. And while that can be annoying, it's important that we remember our own privilege and that we have the ability to work and that we can use technology to do our jobs, which is good, but it's still not without its, its challenges. So I just want to really extend my deepest gratitude for central staff. There have been a lot of hearings this week, a number of them were late into the evening. So many thanks to my colleagues, central staff, and my own team, Samwell, Kiara, Michaela, and Brandon, for their amazing work. The last thing that I want to say, since we had this wonderful discussion around the South End Library with that last docket, is I want to bring into the space Mel King, who is just an amazing Boston treasure. He celebrated his birthday yesterday, his 92nd birthday. I want us to continue to lift up Mel King and his family, not only thanking him for his numerous contributions to this city, but just to keep him continued good health. So continue to keep him and his family lifted and continue to send good vibes their way, and happy birthday, Mel. So if there are no other announcements, we will now move on to memorials for Councilor Braden, John Brendan Leonard. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 28th, at 12:00 noon. For the safety of the general public and all those involved, this meeting will be held online, virtually, and posted. You can view the meeting, viewers can watch the council meeting live by going to YouTube and visiting, or by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 This council meeting is adjourned.
Have a good afternoon, everyone.
Good job. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.